Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, June 10th, 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Council President Mandabon.
Present.
Council Pro Tem Banks.
Present.
Councilman Brightwell.
Here.
Councilman Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Councilman Hicks. Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President, we have a call.
Thank you. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with our presentations for this evening, and our first presentation is the acceptance of a community project funding for the Beechwoods Park and Trail by our Congresswoman Talib.
Council President, council members, thank you so much for this opportunity. We really appreciated the incredible professionalism and the quick response from Treasury and everyone that worked with us on this project. It was a very long process with appropriations, as you probably saw, very many attempts of a government shutdown, and within there was this beautiful line item for the city of Southfield for $850,000 for the Beechwood Park and Trail. And so, we're so incredibly proud to be able to do this community-funded project. We know more is needed, but we again continue to appreciate the partnership. We ask all of our municipalities to apply, and not many will... We ask so many of our municipalities to apply. Not everybody does, but Southfield, since being your member of Congress, have been very active, meeting with us, showing us different proposals. We're also incredibly proud that this, for this fiscal year 2025, we submitted and we're waiting for approval for Mount Vernon Road Project funding, which is something that is a big priority for all of you. And the other one, which I really thank him so much, the mayor and everyone for saying yes, is the, no offense to anybody Republican, I'm not trying to diss on the Republicans, but our, the DOP leadership decided that this year they were not going to allow nonprofit organizations like Habitat for Humanity or any other organizations that are 501(c)(3) or community-based to apply for a community-funded project that has to be government entities. City of Southfield graciously agreed to be one of our partners for about $4 million for home repair grants. So, we're going to wait to see that happens. We may not get the full amount. We asked for a lot more than $850,000. Of course, they drew that back, but again, that's why we asked for a larger amount, and then hopefully they'll agree to it. But again, thank you so much. This is so important, I think, for many of our residents to see this, and thank you, Mayor, for... Oh, yeah.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We won't spend it all at once.
As our Congresswoman has stated, we are, we do have a master plan for the redevelopment of Beechwoods Park, and this is another piece of financing. We're layering on the financing between Oakland County, our own Parks and Rec Department, as well as this grant from the federal government. So, if I may continue with the second presentation, this is before you, it's a joint resolution between the mayor and council declaring Southfield Juneteenth Observances. As you know, in the past, we've been celebrating Juneteenth in Southfield prior to it becoming a federal holiday, and we've always done a week. This year, our Juneteenth Committee put together activities starting today. We had the flag raising at 5:00 this afternoon out front. The Juneteenth flag will fly in front of City Hall all month of June, and we have activities, which I'll delineate in a moment through this resolution, continuing from today onward to June 26th. So, if I may, I'd like to read into the record, "Whereas Juneteenth is a holiday marking the end of slavery in the United States, and whereas, when the Union Army General Gordon Granger landed at the Texas port city of Galveston in 1865, as the Civil War drew to a close, one of his first actions was to read General Order Number Three, which stated that all slaves are free and that former masters and slaves have absolute equality of personal and property rights. And whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in America, this tradition of celebration has remained strong well into the 21st century to recognize the triumph of the human spirit over the cruelty of slavery and to honor the strength, endurance, and faith of African-American ancestors. And whereas, this year marks the third federal Juneteenth Freedom Day recognition, and whereas, it is imperative that citizens across the state join together to acknowledge a time in our history that carried on the nation's ideals of equality and democracy and to celebrates the joys of liberty and justice for every American citizen. And whereas, Southfield will again observe Juneteenth with many celebrations focusing on history, arts, entertainment, recreation, and conversation." So, Southfield's Observances for Juneteenth 2024 include the following. Today, June 10th, the flag raising and council presentation. June 12th, we have jazz and blues at the library. June 14th, we have the senior Juneteenth luncheon. This Saturday at 10:00 AM, I invite all of you to join me on the annual Mayor's Juneteenth Walk. It starts out front, at the circle out front, and it's about a two-mile loop over Northwestern Highway and back, and we stop at the Covenant Church, which was the station on the Underground Railroad in Southfield and the home of an abolitionist preacher in the 1850s. Then on the 18th, we have the Historical Society's Profiles in Freedom, which will take place at the Mary Thompson Farm. On June 22nd, we have the Pearls of Service Foundation Juneteenth Breakfast. That's a ticketed event. On June 22nd, we also have the open mic event at the library. This has, you have to pre-register for this event. All of this, further information is on the city's website. And then on June 26th, we have the Book to Screen at the library, which is about the caste system in America. So, now therefore be resolved that we, mayor and council, city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby proclaim June 10th to 26th as Juneteenth in the city of Southfield and encourage all citizens in Southfield to participate in Juneteenth Freedom Walk and celebration of African-American history and culture while continuing to promote diversity, equity, and a strong sense of community in our city.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we accept the presentation as presented.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the joint resolution of the Southfield Juneteenth Celebration. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move into our communication portion of the, our meeting. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules and procedures for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employer, city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future. Each speaker will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Ms. Geraldine Davis. She's going to come up to the podium.
Good evening to the council, the mayor of Southfield. My name is Geraldine Davis. This is all a sudden surprise for me. I wasn't expecting everything to happen so quickly, but I know I've taken up about 15 seconds of my three minutes. However, I want you to know that I'm here because I came for the Juneteenth celebration, and when I arrived, I didn't see anything outside, and I drove around the complex a couple of times, and I still didn't see anything. I didn't hear any bands, or I didn't see any people, and I didn't see a lot of cars. So, I wasn't sure that I was in the right place. So, I parked, and then I came inside, and there was a gentleman who explained to me that those particular things had already happened, and I missed them because this was the very first day that I knew of the celebration that was going on and the raising of the flag. And I watched the news every day. I watched the news, and my daughter tells me, "You need to stop watching the news so much." But I never saw anything about the celebration today, until today, and then I had roughly maybe an hour, you know, to finish what I was doing to try to get here on time, and I was just really excited. I, you know, I was saying to myself, "I'm going to be there today. I want to see this happen." And when I got here, nothing was happening. So, after I found out that I had missed the celebration of the raising of the flag, then I asked, "Well, where is the flag?" And then I was pointed to a particular direction that the flag was up under the, I'm not sure what flag.
The city flag. The city.
The city of Southfield flag, correct. And I just want to say, my comment is based on not just the size of the flag, but I am concerned about the size of the flag. I would not have seen it. If, if just driving by, I would not have seen the flag, and that flag represents my life. It represents the life of every single person that lives in the United States of America. It would not be here had it not been for my ancestors. They provided the pain and the suffering for this flag.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
My three minutes are up?
Yes.
Well, I did mention that, but I just wanted to say, I think we should have had a bigger flag. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
I would apologize that originally we had publicized it at 5:30, and then normally the budget is approved on the third Monday, and that got moved to 5:30 today. We tried to get the word out, and obviously it didn't get to everybody, so I apologize for that. We did have people here, and we did short speeches, and we raised the flag. It will fly all month, and again, this isn't, Juneteenth isn't one day in Southfield. It's till the 26th, so there are many other occasions that we invite you to come to.
Yes, I read about them in the Sun Magazine, in the newspaper, right.
More information is on the city website. I couldn't detail everything, and, but...
Thank you when you mentioned that, the, the timing of everything. That does explain, you know, certain things, so thank you so very much, Mayor, for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me. I just wanted to add about the size of the flag. We ordered that flag, and that was the best that we could get, but don't let the size, I don't want to say don't let the size fool you, but please don't take that as a misunderstanding from us. Our city here, we celebrate Juneteenth, and we put a lot of time and effort into recognition, and it's for our citizens to recognize what has happened in the past to African-Americans. And I think that we do a good job celebrating. It's just that the flag that we look for, that was the best that we could get, and we are doing the best job we can, and thank you so much. And please also check the Facebook page too, before, prior to Juneteenth, and all of the information about what's going on will give you a better heads-up so you can set the schedule, and we'll keep you informed. Thank you so much, and apologize.
I would, I just also have to add, the first time we found a Juneteenth flag, it was this big.
Yes, it was.
So, this was a big improvement when we purchased this one.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Caitlin Homrich-Neeling.
I'm Caitlin Homrich-Neeling. I'm with an organization called We the People Michigan, and our Southfield team was directed to address you all and ask for help from plez, more. We're organizing around the issue of housing, and I'm speaking for a resident today who couldn't be here because she's in the midst of a housing crisis, Vanetta Sanders. She says, well, she wrote for me. She is a single mother that has been living in Southfield since 1986 and has been a renter in Southfield since 1998. In 2016, she moved to her complex. The property was sold to Caffton Communities in 2022. Since the takeover, they have increased rent, added a host of junk fees, and are using a third-party water billing company called RealPage. In addition, in May, she was told that her lease would not be renewed after living there for eight years, and that the expiration date was on May 31st. The city of Southfield does not have a right to renew ordinance for renters, and landlords do not have to give a just cause for evicting a tenant. As a renter, she exercised her rights last year when the property management did not provide adequate maintenance to her unit from April through June. She contacted them repeatedly about mold, a running shower, a hole in the bathroom wall, and eventually was told they don't have a maintenance person. She decided to withhold the rent in order to get the work done. There was a pre-trial and a trial with a judge. She was instructed to put her rent in escrow, and still, after four months, Caffton Communities reported that her payments were late. As a result, she did not move out on May 31st. She is currently paying their rent and 150% over that since her lease has expired. She has a daughter in high school and would be homeless right now due to the late payments being reported to her rental history. She's having a really hard time finding a new place. This property currently has over 10 vacant units. The company, RealPage, has been investigated by the FBI for price fixing. There's more about that, but I don't want to run out of time. In closing, she's asking, and we're asking, that you look into renters' rights in Southfield, please. The situation is really unacceptable, what residents are going through. Not having an ordinance or renters' bill of rights in place leaves families with the possibility of housing instability and insecurity. Families are left in a state of uncertainty, just trying to figure out where can we go next month. It should be a fundamental right for all, housing, and right now is the time for action. We have a list that I can hand out to you all, if you'd like, of policies that we're interested in.
You can hand it to our city clerk.
And a legislative pack.
And she will make sure that we receive that. Thank you. Our next speaker is Earl Crump.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to make a statement concerning an incident that happened while I was on vacation, but before I do that, I would like to acknowledge and express my appreciation to the following individuals who were able to assist me in the information that I request. First, I'd like to appreciate Mrs. Dawson, the Assistant to Chief Baron, the Southfield Police Dispatcher, who was on duty on May 22, 2024, Ms. Beverly, who was in the mayor's office on Friday, May 31, 2024, and also an unnamed individual from the clerk's office, who was very nice and made sure that I was held on the phone until someone assists me. She made sure that if the call was dropped, that she had the correct number to contact And then finally, I'd like to appreciate Mr. AJ of the Water Department. Concerning the incident that I'm speaking of, on May 22, 2024, we were out of town. Contractor came and dug a hole in our front lawn and placed sand in it. My neighbor called my wife and informed her. After receiving the call, I made several calls to city offices. First, I called the mayor's office, got a voicemail. Called the administration office, got a voicemail. Called Southfield Engineering. I spoke with an engineer who claimed that she would check out what was going on and get back with me. I heard from her when I called back on May 31, 2024. Then I called back to the chief office. Once I called the police department, the person at the police department transferred me to the prompts, telephone prompts, nine, 10 prompts. Called back, and she transferred me to the chief assistant.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Who explained to me, "Sir, I'm, I respect you, but I need to express this. I need to express that this is city business."
I can give you another 30 seconds.
Pardon me?
I can give you another 30 seconds if you...
Okay, so after calling all of these departments, nobody could help me but these three or four individuals. And finally, on Friday, 5:31, the clerk, the person from the clerk's office, and I'm so sorry that I did, I failed to get her name, she placed me with someone who could help me. I called the Water Department before. They transferred me to Ms. Dig. So, finally, the clerk got in, the person from the clerk's office got in touch with someone from the Water Department, and he called me. I called him back, and he explained everything to me. All of this was from replacing the water lines to make sure they were let free. I got a notice in April. The, the person from the contractor company came down and took pictures and did what he needed to do. He told me that was it. The notice did not say that this was a multi-phase project. So, I need great communication, and I need good response from the city when I'm out of town and someone is digging in my yard, and I don't get, I don't get an answer until five or six days later. Mr. Mayor called me, did call me, but these other officers did not call me. The mayor did call me, but I was unable to take the call because I did not, and I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. But the other department, four or five departments here, you paying taxes for services, don't get no call, nobody in the office, voicemails only? That's not, that's not right for me. I don't appreciate that.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. That concludes our communications for this evening. Our next item this evening is our set of minutes from January 8th, regular meeting Councilman Banks?
I move that the January 8, 2024, regular council meeting minutes be approved as presented.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the January 8, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You, you can, Councilwoman Hoag?
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe there may be a person in the audience. Did you want to speak now? If you do, I can tell you probably want to speak. We're going to allow you to come up if you want to. Thank you, Mr. President.
If you can just give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
This is, I know she was there, but I think she didn't know the time.
Yes, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Sidney Thompson, and I am a Southfield resident who is living at 17161 Morrison Street. I came here today with Caitlin and the rest of the We the People Southfield team, and I would like to add an additional perspective about the issue of housing in the city of Southfield. I have been living in the city of Southfield for my entire life, 30 years, and I have always been deeply enmeshed in the community. I went to public schools here. I have been involved in extracurricular activities here at the city of Southfield Business Government Offices, and I am finding, just like Vanetta, even though I own my house that I live in currently, I have struggled consistently with financial stability and housing affordability over the past four years. Although I own my house now, I was renting for about five years previous to, to me currently, and the only reason that I decided to buy the house was because the, the conditions in a lot of the rental units in Southfield and in Oakland County in general are just deplorable in terms of the price. The last apartment that I was living in was over $2,000 a month, and they did not conduct any regular maintenance to keep it up to code or keep it habitable for me and my family. So, even once buying my house, I continued to have issues because the economy has continued to leave many of us behind. We say that we want to have a very flo- We say that we want to have a very flourishing community, but we do not provide the safeguards either on the federal or on the state or local level to make sure that when we can't pay for our mortgage or when we're having issues with mold or contractors, there's no one we can hold accountable to make sure that we actually can stay here and live a healthy, happy life in the community that we were born and raised in. I really want to implore everyone on the city council and also the mayor to help us, help work together with us to make sure that people going forward in the decades to come will always be able to stay in these communities and feel proud that they're adding to our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next we move on to our consent agenda. These next items are items that are considered routine or non-controversial or have been previously discussed. Council, do you have any items you'd like polled for further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to poll for clarifications. Item B and item I, I as an indigo.
Okay. Council, any other items anyone would like polled? All right, so Councilwoman Brightwell, why don't you ask your questions? We do have someone from DPW here for item B, so... All right, what is your question, sir?
I became very knowledgeable about lifts since I've been on council. This is more informational purpose. The SCADA thing in item B, would that assist us in dealing with flushables?
What the SCADA system actually does is alerts us and keeps us alerted to all conditions within the lift stations. So if we are having a pump problem, which unfortunately we've been having a lot of due to flushables, yes, it would tell us. Wouldn't tell us exactly that we're having a problem with the flushable, but it will say, give us a warning that one of our pumps is in failure or beginning to fail.
Okay, it'll alert you to something that's going on.
Exactly.
Okay. And flushables would indicate something that's going on?
Right.
Okay.
We do also have, in this recently passed budget, a program to update our lift stations to put in chopper pumps to address the flushables. They'll actually grind them into a little pulp.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ryan.
All right, and your next question is about the debt book?
Yes, the debt book item.
Okay, Mr. Zorn can handle that. What's your question, sir?
I'm sorry, let me track the item. It's a software process that finance uses for tracking our debt obligation payments and that, and who else we have contracts with.
Okay, that's an ideal, and that's right down one of my goals and objectives since I've been here. Will this assist us? I think it's, I think it's not apples and oranges, but it's apples and different kinds of apples. But would this assist us in contract, contract tracking? You know, we, we have an issue with contracts expiring, and we don't know about it. Would this allow us, assist us in tracking? Well, is there anything similar to this, what we say, the contract tracking?
Yeah, it's a software that we use to track that.
Okay, but is this?
Does the, does the, does the debt book software track contract renewals?
I'm sorry?
Does this software track contract renewals?
Yes, it is a renewal.
Oh, okay. Well, that... This is, we can put this into, because it always disturbs me, we, when contracts, we get a contract that expired last month. So this will assist us in contract tracking?
The question is, will this software help with tracking contracts throughout the city?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Yes. Okay, all right.
Mr. President?
So with that, if there's no other questions, I would move that we approve consented items A through L as presented.
Support.
All right, it has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve item A, the authorization to purchase a backhoe for the Water and Sword Division; item B, authorization to update the supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA system; receipt of bids for branch and brush chipping services; authorization to purchase a trailer for the Streets and Highway Division; item E, authorization for a budget adjustment to the local street land improvement account; item F, authorization to purchase new fire hose for the Fire Department; item G, authorization for additional funds for the landscape improvement services for the Fire Department; item H, an amendment request for authorization to uplift vehicles for fire prevention; item I, debt book subscription renewal; item J, authorization to award a bid for the pedestrian furnishing installations at bus stops and along paths; item K, at National Garage Sale Day, where we will waive permit fees for garage sales during a specific timeframe; and item L, authorization for increasing the contract total for additional expenditures for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning maintenance and repair services in the library. Council, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we have two ordinance, ordinances to approve. Councilwoman Hoag?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we enact ordinance number 1786 rezoning 11.9 acres of land at 2977 Telegraph Road.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to enact ordinance 1786. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we enact ordinance number 1787 rezoning 5.51 acres of land on the south side of Hooper Road, West of Burg Road in Southfield, Michigan. Hooper Road, I'm sorry.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to enact ordinance number 1787. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we move into items for discussion, and we have, these are all planning items. Our first is a presentation and discussion regarding a proposal to construct an addition to a gas station and convenience store with a carryout restaurant at 28745 Northwestern Highway.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, everyone. Our first discussion item, as stated, is to construct in addition to an existing gas station convenience store, including the addition of a carryout restaurant. There are no proposed alcohol sales, just, just to make that clear on this particular site. Existing zoning is B3. Hours of operation, 6:30 a.m. to midnight. Number of employees on a larger shift is four. The current zoning is B3, and it is consistent with the future land use plan. It's an existing facility. Here are some pictures of the site. They are proposing to enlarge and expand the C store operation and make some improvements to the building facade, as well as landscaping improvements. And with that, if the petitioner is here? And each petitioner was notified to be here. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions if, or we could go on to the other presentations to see if somebody shows up, but they were alerted to be here tonight.
So why don't we do that, and maybe they'll show up if there's another petitioner here?
Okay. So our, our next discussion item is the presentation discussion regarding a proposal to permit construction and operation of a Big B Cafe with drive-through at the western end cap of an existing shopping center located at 27200 West Eight Mile Road.
Is that petitioner here?
Yes. All right. I'll do a brief introduction. The hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Total number of employees, 16 to 24, with a maximum shift of five. The site is B3, general business, the future land use is regional mixed use. The proposal is for the western end of the shopping center here. Existing conditions, both on the front and the rear. This is the end cap that the Big B coffee shop drive-through would be located. And here is the floor plan with the site circulation and the drive-through ordering and pickup and exiting. It follows landscape improvements, interior floor plan, and other, the addition of a drive-through window. So with that, I'm going to turn it over, Mr. Pollock, and the petitioner, if you want to make any additional comments about the proposal, we'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
I'm Tim Fo, 24045 Woodland Drive, and the architect that's put together this for the NASA Gasol Group. Pretty much, Terry, you've hit what we've looking to do, and hopefully it meets council's, our council's approval.
Counsel, do you have any questions about this development?
Not a question, just a statement. Excuse me, is the owner here of that property?
Yes.
I actually just wanted to state that I appreciate the work that you're doing at that site, because I drive by there a lot, and it's good to see the businesses that are there, they're thriving, and they do well. Great presence, you know, there's no trouble, I've never seen trouble there, they come in and out, so I think this will be a welcome asset, and just appreciate that spot.
We appreciate you guys, and we're doing our best to improve that property to get more foot traffic.
That's great, yeah, that whole area, it could use some foot traffic, and you are adding to it, I've been watching that since you've opened, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? I'll just add, you know, this, I don't drive by there as often as Councilwoman Hoag, but I do appreciate when, you know, we're trying to improve buildings and, again, bring in more foot traffic and more businesses into the, into the city, so I do appreciate that. Okay?
Through the chair, they had made some previous improvements with the brick piers and fencing, which I know there's a couple dings in there, and you said that you would get those repaired.
We add more wrought iron on the site.
We're adding more wrought iron and brick fillers to the site where the drive, so we're planning to take care, there's a couple of dented areas on Eight Mile, we're planning to do that.
Is that the one you were referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to point out with the addition of the new, we also look at the site to make sure that everything else is in compliance, and they've agreed to repair some of the, the dings and damages to the existing.
It's from the snowplows, I think, from Eight Mile, some from the cars that are on site, but they will be taken care of for sure, along, when we add more wrought iron on the site.
Okay, Councilwoman Hoag?
Just a quick question, because the planner, he went through so quick. Is the Big B location, is it on that corner there? Because I thought those corner slots were already taken, someone was in there, the corner.
Yes, we are relocating the nail salon to the center.
I thought so. I told you, I go by there a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, to make sure for the drive-through, so they could be there.
Yes, exactly, for drive-through.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will, this will come back to us on the 24th for a public hearing?
Same time, 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock, yes.
We thank you guys very much, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Through, through the chair, our next item is a site plan review, PSP 24-0003.
And before we start, do we have someone to speak on that? I just don't see them here. Oh, okay. Come on up. All right, sorry, you can go ahead.
It's okay. Property's located at 18330 George Washington Drive. Existing zoning is residential unit development district, so if you recall, a few years ago, the former school, it was master planned for residential renovation of the existing school and new side-by-side condominium homes. Phase 1 was approved as part of the original residential unit development, but at the time, the phase 2 construction developer hadn't been identified, they were to come back for phase 2 approvals for the site plan. So the, the entire site was rezoned residential unit development for higher-density residential, adaptive reuse of the former school site, and new construction, and that's consistent with the future land use plan. And if you recall, there were some temporary classroom buildings that had been decayed, broken into, rodents were living there, a lot of water damage, so those were removed. There's been some renovation done on the existing site, but this is to consider the infill development to the eastern portion of the site, as indicated by 11 attached two-family homes, is shaded out here. This is the overall landscape plan, so on the western portion is adaptive reuse of the school with condominium development inside, and then these freestanding units that reflect the arts and crafts style of the period. These are the side-by-side elevations, front and back, and the, and the two sides, typical floor plans for the two, two units. And then here is a rendering, and you can see the architectural embellishes and complements the architecture of the original school. And with that, ask the petitioner to come up and add any comments that you would like to, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Planner. Good evening, Council, and my name is Anthony Erebor, 40950 Woodward Avenue, Suite 300, Bloomfield Hills, and I am a Southfield resident as well, 29309 Willowett Court, Southfield. And yes, we are here seeking phase 2 approval of the site per, of the site plan. So I am the construction manager on site, things are going well, we are moving along, and we would like this site plan approval tonight, well, not tonight, actually, excuse me, in two weeks, because of their, the underground, we need the utilities in soon, and so we're working on that, we're planning on that, so, but Planner Code covered everything, so thank you very much for listening. And, well, I'll turn it back over, I will try to answer any questions.
Yeah, and I could say that this is virtually the same as the concept plan that was submitted. There's been some minor engineering drainage issues along the frontage, but other than that, this is the same floor plan and layout as what was approved, as, as the concept master plan.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Brightwell?
Did you say that the, the sewer, electrical utilities?
Yes. The incoming, incoming sewer, electrical. Yes.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I'd just add that this is a compromise with the neighborhood. Originally, there were 48 units, and this is 22. So the neighborhood, they asked for less density, and actually, the former design looked more like barracks. This is very, very attractive, and it complements the 1929 school.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just a quick question, when will these be ready?
End of 2025, the whole entire site, phase 1 and 2. So yes, we're going to get rocking.
Looking forward to it.
It's an exciting project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? All right, so we will see you back in two weeks as well for a site plan approval. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, and through the chair, our next item is PZR twenty-four dash zero 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 three. The petitioner is Southfield Christian School and Highland Park Baptist Church. They're located at twenty-eight six hundred Loser Road. Existing zoning is RM multiple family, proposes R two, single family, with some RM multiple family retained in the northwest corner of the site. And this is the current open athletic field that's not been formalized. That's the area that they would like to rezone for future potential development. And the RM does not allow, the RM multiple family low rise does not allow for the expansion of the school and the church uses with that particular zoning. So that's the site aerial, you can see that it's mostly just open green space. There's some tree buffering to the east, and they're using it for soccer and practice fields currently. This is the existing site plan, and with that, I don't know if the architect representing the petitioner would like to make any additional comments at this time?
Hi there, my name is Gina Van Tine, I'm from Informed Studio, two three five East Main Street, Suite one oh two B, that's in Northville, Michigan. And I don't really have any other comments, I think Mr. Crowe covered everything, but I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Counselman Banks?
Thank you, what are you thinking of or proposing for the future for the site?
Athletic fields.
I'm sorry?
Athletic fields.
Athletic fields.
Mm-hmm.
So to the planner, the athletic fields will be on the corner of Twelve Mile and Loser?
They would be located in this open green space. They're currently using, using it informally as a practice area, and they've got some soccer fields, I think some of the football team practices there, but at some point, they like to formalize their athletic fields and redevelop the existing facilities here. Those are the long-term plans. There currently is a missionary rectory home here, potentially in the future, they might have some additional accessory residential to the school and the church, but those are all yet to be determined. The first step is to get the rezoning in place, they would have to come back for site plan approval at that time. And I know that I've seen several different iterations over multiple years about what they'd like to potentially expand for athletic fields, but nothing's been finalized at this time.
And they presently have the baseball field in the, to the what, to the east side for the church?
Yes, that's correct, that's over here.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Counselwoman Hoag?
Counselwoman Banks actually asked my first question, and so my follow-up question to that would be, is there any concerns that you have being on that corner?
I'm sorry, is there what?
Do you guys, have you thought about any concerns there would be having athletic fields on that corner? Because I've never seen much activity there and I go by there a lot, so, how have you guys thought to approach that or handle that?
The long-term plan is to put softball and baseball there, so we will have temporary netting that would go up. But there's plenty of room for that, that's actually a very large site, so we will have plenty of room to do that. But that, like Mr. Crowe said, that is a future consideration at this point, so we have to raise some money.
Okay, yeah, I know, I don't necessarily see a lot of accidents right there, but I would just be a bit concerned on being on the corner, but I'd like to see how you would bear, put a barrier toward that and to, obviously, I know you want to protect.
Right, absolutely.
Anybody that's there.
Yeah, for sure, and the shortest distance would be from home plate to Loser, actually. Twelve Mile would be, that would be a major league hit.
Right, okay, but I appreciate it, that's all.
Right, Counselman Brightwell?
What type of consideration, and I understand sporting activities can be, you know, loud, gorgeous and all that. What kind of consideration have you made with respect to the intrusiveness of that with respect to the sportiness at that block, in that general area? Just, just the residents in that general area?
Intrusive to the neighbors to the east?
Yeah, what more area?
We actually have a, I think it's informal kind of agreement with the city to maintain a fifty-foot buffer along that drive to the east, so we're not going to impinge on that.
All right, well, you can't really build anything, make sure that, you know, the neighborhood or nearby residents are considered the same.
Oh, yeah, actually, we've had, two meetings with the residents? Two meetings, two?
One.
One, so we've met with the HOA. And they're, they seem to be very excited about it, so it's great.
What, what's the age of your students, K through twelve?
It's K through twelve, and we have preschool as well.
What type of school is that?
Well, it's a small school, so they have, they have football, they have baseball, they have track, and they're using, you know, agreements with other schools to do a lot of that. They also have softball, and then they have indoor sports as well. Did I miss anything? Soccer, I did miss soccer.
So, General Norshell, if I ask you a question?
Yeah, actually, the major selling point to the HOA was that, you know, our games are during the day, generally. We're not looking at putting lights and doing late night and, you know, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Counselwoman Haines?
You said you were offering housing, are you adding to the existing houses there or?
We're actually, the housing is way off in the future, the existing missionary home that has like four apartments in it is really, really old and not in great shape, so they've been talking about, well, do we repair it or do we actually, you know, build new? They don't have any donations at this point to do that, but we had considered along that drive doing some like row house type style, you know, with maybe some parking along that driveway kind of thing, but that's, that could be way in the future, I have no idea.
Thank you.
Counselwoman Banks?
Thank you, to the planner, do we have any other locations in the city of Southfield that have netting around them? The petitioner had mentioned netting.
Well, I know a number of the golf courses, including our own driving range, Plum Hollow's driving range and others have, have netting, separating them from adjacent residents.
Plum Hollow has netting? Where is their netting?
On the south side of their driving range, they have netting that separates them from the residential complex to the south. And our own driving range at Beachwoods has netting. Those are two that come quickly to mind, there may be others.
Oh, I'm, okay.
And at this point, if I, if I could, only considering the rezoning from RM to R two, they would have to come back, even though I've seen some conceptual plans, they would have to come back for site plan approval, where we would work all these details out. They're in, they need to get in a phase of fundraising towards these facilities before they do anything, and so they'd like to get the zoning in place, so they, they have that potential in the future.
No, and I understand that, it's just I wanted to voice that, just depending how it's laid out, the netting on the corner of Loser and Twelve Mile, I am not in favor of that. Maybe it would be on the other corner, but.
Well, it's only temporary, and it would, it would only be for the games, and it would be along Loser Road.
So, you know, in concept, again.
Correct.
It would be raised for the game and then lowered when not in use, and it all depends on the layout and the distances and all that. That, that's way before, you know, we haven't even gotten to that level. It's just, again, the RM does not allow them to expand for athletic facilities or uses for the, to support the school and church.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up, I, with what Counselman Banks said, you know, it would look, I think we could all agree, it would look a little tacky having netting all along Loser, but to hear that it would be raised and lowered for game days, I think that's something that's definitely doable and would make sense. But again, that's a while down the line, we are doing this in phases, so the first part is to rezone. Counsel, any other questions? All right, so.
I just wanted to say, I mean, that's kind of natural for sporting events, and we would want to welcome that type of thing for kids in the community. I mean, look at Lawrence Tech, the expansion that they have there, they don't have netting, but it's a lot of changes we made at Tin and, what is it, Northwestern, the service drive, and, you know, we want to welcome the kids in the community, just, if, what, temporary, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think, you know, the, again, we're looking, we're getting way ahead of ourselves, but temporarily to, you know, if you can raise it and lower it, I think makes, makes a lot of sense. But this is just the first part to rezone, so if there's no other questions, we will see you back in two weeks.
Sounds great, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Crowe, do we?
I don't see, I don't see the petitioner, I guess I'll just do one last call-out if the petitioner for the gas station located at two eight seven four five Northwestern Highway has showed up.
Right, so if you want to try to walk us through it and see what, what questions may come up, this is, I, we did talk about this, the planner and I talked about this earlier, and it seems reasonable what they're asking.
And again, if there's not a comfort level at the time of the public hearing, you could postpone making a decision. There's a little bit of lag here, I apologize. I will say this, if you recall, when the proposal for the gas station across the street came in, these are one of the owners that objected to that, and now that there is development happening across the street, they've decided to make a major investment to improve their business by, they have a smaller, you could see they have a very small C store currently as part of the gas station. So this rectangular building is their current C store with the canopy. You can see it from Franklin looking north, and then they're more than doubling the size of the C store, and they are proposing expansion of the convenience store as well as adding a future carryout restaurant. There's no alcohol sales being requested at this time, or they haven't indicated that they are looking to do that. And then this gives us an opportunity to make some additional improvements to the site with the pedestrian connectivity, improving the existing bus stop on Franklin, some additional landscaping, site circulation and parking. So here's the, here's the floor plan showing their layout. They're going to be raising the height and elevation of the building, making it more modern, using durable materials, and again, overall, investing in their corner property.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Yes?
Just a comment, glad to hear that, because that location could use an upgrade. So whatever it took to get them to move in that direction, they certainly needed it. I frequent, I don't frequent that place, that road, I think we all do probably, but, so I'm glad to hear that they're, you know, willing to step it up because it certainly does, because it's very small, and just to compete, people want to go to places that look good, feel good and all of that, so it's going to help them as well as help us, the city. So I'm glad to see that they're, they're wanting to invest in their property, so, thank you.
And I don't want to be a dead horse, but we've talked about the gas industry, the movement towards EV charging stations, and that, you know, everything I hear, they make more revenue now on the C store operation than actual gas sales, and this is a long-term trend. We still have, I think, three hundred million vehicles that are gas, gas guzzling, so it's going to take some time to phase out. And I see likely these are going to convert to neighborhood service type stores, they might have EV charging stations, there might be other things that evolve, but this is part of that transition from the small mom-and-pop gas station that had one or two repair bays, and only two of our thirty-six gas stations have repair bays anymore. This is the natural evolution, and, and I do say that the competition with some of the new investment and reinvestment in the gas stations, I think, either directly or indirectly, have caused them to make an investment as well.
Because to me, it's, it's only going to improve and increase his business, so, thank you.
Counselman Brightwell?
Yeah, Mr. Crowe, obviously, this is the trend that's coming down the road, and I'm, I'm privileged for that. But my question is, just looking at this diagram, is everything to scale? Is there enough acreage that they have to do what they want to do? I mean, so there's, within our.
I believe they're going to have some waivers that are more dealing with landscape, width of landscape setbacks and so forth, because this is an existing use, but the non-conformities aren't being expanded or enlarged, to my knowledge.
Non-conformities are what?
The non, if, if there was any non-conforming, it's not being expanded or enlarged.
Okay.
We're just, it's either an existing situation or improving on that situation.
Okay, yeah.
Typically, there's like a fifteen-foot, a landscape buffer that's required, they might only have less than that because it's an existing condition, but we're getting new landscaping or screening or other, other site amenities to offset that.
Right, okay, it's just, I knew that sometimes things are not drawn to scale, but I'm fine with it, thank you.
Counselwoman Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Crowe, there, the station that's being developed across the street, are they also going to have a convenience store and a carryout for food?
I know for, in fact, it's a larger convenience store, I'll have to double-check about the carryout.
And they are requesting liquor at that location also?
They might be coming back because I believe counsel approved them prior to you allowing alcohol sales. When they got approved, it was just for the C store and gas station, I don't believe the alcohol sales was a permitted use at the time, but they may be coming back for that, and I'll, I'll have that, I'll check into that before we, before we come back. And they were just, I think they were just giving us progress finally, you started seeing some, some construction happening across the street there.
I also am happy to see the improvement to this property, but, you know, I hope both stations are able to survive with their stores and restaurants and gas, I mean, they're right next to each other.
Well, again, and I'm not an expert, but having dealt with a number of these gas stations, it all has to do with direction of travel.
Correct.
Convenience, there's brand loyalty, I know I only get my gas at certain brands, and.
That's true.
It's just the dynamic of, you could have literally a gas station on four corners and they can all do well based on the volume of traffic, brand loyalty and so forth. That's just a general term, so, and at some, at some point, I think that's part of why they are raising their game to be, to stay in competition with the other improvements that we're seeing there in the area.
Thank you.
Counselwoman Haines?
That was pretty much the question I had, so on here it says the addition of a carryout restaurant, so there, now, are they in search of a liquor license, they may be getting one, or they don't, like you said, you don't know?
The, I asked Mr. Payson today if we know what. The, um, I asked Mr. Payson today if we know what, um, they are planning on doing. And they don't have any, they don't have a franchisee identified yet. They, they just want to build the space to have, whether it's sandwiches or chicken or, or some, uh, kind of fast and ready to go. Cause they see that as part of their business model. And again, uh, hopefully we'll get the petitioner here. I don't know where the, um, you know, what happened. They ha- they were all informed. They could ask, answer those questions specifically.
But it, so to build, it's, it's, they're redoing the entire thing?
Here, we're talking about the existing, they're, they're more than doubling their existing size. And so their floor plan, let's see if I can find it here. So they have, uh, this space designated as carryout. It's just an, just open carryout space, the upper right-hand corner.
I know in some cities, there, the convenience store has, which I kind of like when I, when I'm going out of town too. Uh, there's food and there are other things that they have for sale, maybe like paraphernalia or, I don't know what's the word right now, uh, Michigan items, you know, like to, uh, to collect for something like that. Is that sort of what they're doing too with it expanding net large? You know, is it going to be like a little-
Again, that, that would be a question for the proprietor, owner, and what they plan on doing.
I like the idea of it, and the great thing that you did say too is the fact that when you're traveling on one side or the other side, if you're going one way, you're not, you don't want to turn all the way around to go to the other side. So that's a, a good addition and I think that's going to be a really nice, uh, look for us and hope to hear from you.
And if, you, you've heard of, uh, Buc-E's and Sheets. I mean, those are the mega convenience gas station stores where you have sit-down restaurants and they have, talk about touristy things. I think I spent a hundred bucks on my grandsons the last time I was in Texas at one of those Buck, uh, Buc-E's, plus all their, their famous pecan rolls and so forth. So, I mean, that, that's, that's, that's the scale of, um, some of these mega convenience gas station stores along major highways.
And that's the trend too.
That's the trend. So there's all kinds of touristy things you can get at some of these.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I think it's already been said, but, uh, this is a classic case of what competition can do. And, you know, one of the things I've repeated, uh, any number of times here is how some of our gas stations look really tired. And so, uh, I'm very glad to see this. This, somebody's upping their game because the neighborhood is changing.
Yes.
So, great job.
Alright, so again, this will come back to us in two weeks. Hopefully the petitioner will be here to answer questions and we will go from there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we are now up to the council portion of our meeting. We have two expense reports.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve travel expense report for Councilwoman Hoag for MML Spring Advanced Summit.
Support? It has been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Haines, to approve the travel expense report for Councilwoman Hoag to attend the MML Spring Advanced Summit. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the travel expense report for Councilwoman Nancy Banks for the Detroit Regional Chamber of Commerce Conference.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the travel expense report for Councilman Banks for attending the Detroit Regional Chamber of Commerce Conference. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Counsel.
Does Counsel have any comments? Councilman, Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, yes, I have a, with respect to veterans, I just want veterans to know that if you are feeling, um, uncomfortable or you need to chat with someone and, you know, you do not have to be a, a part of the VA health benefit. Oh, you have to do this dial nine eight eight and press one. That is a crisis line for veterans. And if you just happen to know a veteran, uh, and you hear, you're aware of this, please pass this on. Since I've been involved with the veterans, since I was chair of the Veterans Commission, we always give seminars, informational seminars. And sometime we'll have two hundred people showing up in room two fifteen in, in, in the Parks and Rec building. And the biggest worry we wanted to pass on was just pass the info on. You may not be a vet, but you might know someone. And, um, only forty-seven percent of veterans are using the benefits that are offered them by their service. So there's, there's a, there's a big gap there for the services and money available for veterans. So please pass the word on. One other thing, this, this comes back from my, my days of being the chair of the Veterans Commission. We interviewed veterans who had, who were combat veterans for the Library of Congress. And with Southfield Veterans Commission, we did about four hundred interviews. Uh, we worked at, with our congressperson at the time, Mr. Stan Levin. And we, in our support group was the, here at the city is the Southfield Police Department. To get that project going and to get organized with the Library of Congress, we purchased a camera, a very nice camera for us, and we conducted our interviews either at the conference room in the, the executive room in the library and/or a conference room in the, uh, police department. So we got about four hundred, uh, four hundred, uh, interviews at the Library of Congress. And also there are copies here in the Southfield Public Library. Those interviews, they were di- digitized and you can go in. And the point I want to make is that, why I'm bringing this up is that we just recognized D-Day and just a couple of days ago, it was all over, uh, the president was there. And we, I interviewed a gentleman who was actually on Normandy Beach. And he, he was a twenty-one-year-old. And the only reason he survived is, is belt buckle stopped a bullet. So that's one thing. But the thing that, that really is telling here is that he was a private and there were so many casualties at Normandy, at the beach there, that the low, the privates and PC, PFCs, their job was to pick up body parts. So this is pretty, uh, this is pretty gruesome, very gruesome. That's a part of war. And watching the D-Day just the other day reminded me of this, uh, interview I did with this gentleman. His name was Albert Seychel. He was a retired supervisor with the, you know, Detroit Police, um, Post Office. And if you are a history buff, you can go on to Library of Commerce, loc.gov-vhp, that's the Veterans History Project. L-O-C dot gov-vhp, and you can pull up his interview. His name is Albert Paul Seychel, S-E-C, S-E-Y-C-H-E-L, S. Seychel, S-E-Y-C-H-E-L. And it's a very telling interview. You can just, the guy, Mr. Seychel showed up with his family and kids in the, uh, conference room there. He told things he, that he had not told his wife of years. And they had been, they had about four or five kids. And the hour, the interview was an hour and twenty minutes. But in addition to, if you go out on that website, of those four hundred interviews, those interviews were conducted here in Southfield. We had Mr., uh, former city, city councilman Sid Lance. We had L. Brooks Patterson. We had, uh, a former, uh, employee Frank Coontz. And also our, our current, uh, IT director, Renee Hemahosa. He's, he's been, he's a part of those four hundred interviews. But the main thing of it is that if you are concerned about, uh, what, if you're a history buff, you, you just want to know what people had to go through during, during war and a combat. There was any war that, that a gentleman, anyone had participated in up until the current things that were going on in Afghanistan. Of those four hundred interviews, you would, um, you would learn something. And also a couple Tuskegee Almonds, Mr. Alexander Jefferson, he's been interviewed. He's a part of that collection. Uh, it's, it's a, anyone who is interested in, uh, first-person history, and I'll just leave it alone now, but we had a, we had a veteran commission member, commission member. Her daughter was teaching in Germany, her daughter, she married a gentleman from Germany. And he, she was teaching in, in Germany, but she would refer her students to the Library of Congress, Veterans History Project, our, our, our collection. So they could get a firsthand, first-person account of how things happened in war for the individuals who actually had to fight in war. So, um, but that's, that's a commercial for the Veteran History Project in the Library of Congress. But if you knew a veteran who might be in crisis, just tell them to not dial nine eight eight and to press, press one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Haines.
Yes, um, I wanted to speak to the ladies that were talking about the housing earlier. We, to, just to let them know, one of the young ladies, uh, spoke about she needed some help. There are programs here at the, uh, city that can offer some assistance, uh, not with housing, but also with some, uh, just some general assist, emergency assistance that may, they need to, may need to know about. And also their programs, not programs, but they're also not part of the city, but within the city of Southfield, financial places that can help you to understand some things about budgeting and financing that could help you with those housing, uh, situations. Maybe something like, uh, how to manage your finances in, in addition to those emergencies that you do have. And I also want to add to a couple of things. Our Memorial Day program was very well put on here for anyone that missed that. It was a history lesson for us all. It was, it was excellent. Um, just things that I did not know and I'd like to commend, uh, all those who played a part in having that to happen here. And I think that, uh, for those of you that missed it, it will come up again. It's so important that we learn about our history, read, listen and understand. Even coming up to Juneteenth, uh, this is an important time in the history of African-Americans as in all cultures. I was just reading where there's not very many cultures that haven't suffered at some point in history. And I think that it's important to learn from those things because we don't repeat those things and don't have those things to happen again. And also for those that came before us that couldn't celebrate in any way, couldn't walk where they wanted to walk, uh, couldn't, uh, drink water where they wanted to drink water and all of those things, we should come out in droves to these type of programs to, uh, support them. Be it, um, any culture, just to understand and to appreciate and respect those that did not have their life that we afford here in this country of America. And I think it's really important that we just pay homage to those people and educate others about that. There's information on the website, uh, all the time about all of our programs. The mayor has an excellent memo that goes out about this information. There's tons of resources and you can always call the city if you want to know what's going on. Just, uh, pay attention to it. We put a lot of money into a lot of these events, like at the library, we're having jazz and blues. It's free to the public this Wednesday coming up, but, uh, the lib, the Friends of the Library pays for that. And we do that for the community to come together. And there, these are times where people can enjoy themselves at a minimal cost without running downtown, worrying about parking or all these things. It's just a very nice program. So just support the things that we have in this city and be a part of it. If you can't, uh, attend, tell your friends about it to come out and enjoy themselves and have a good time. Those that want to have a good time, those are people we want to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Thank you. And if I could add, I think it was Cindy Thomas, although I don't know if she's still here. Um, she had mentioned during her communication that there was also problems with contractors, um, you know, in renovating her home. We have an excellent building department and, um, please don't hesitate to call them if you're having problems with a contractor. Maybe they were supposed to pull a permit and they didn't. And our building department will be able to help and assist those that are, um, you know, having problems with contractors. I'd also like to, um, thank, and I wish I had done it when she was here, our Congresswoman for, um, the support that she has given the city of Southfield and the most recent award. Um, she is always readily available, um, her and/or her staff whenever we call. And, um, I just want to thank her for, um, awarding the Beechwood, um, project to the ci- or, for helping us get the money for the Beechwood project. Also, this past weekend, the city hosted the, um, Mid-Century Modern Tour in the city of Southfield. For anyone who has not been on it before, um, I highly suggest that you consider going next year. Was a, you know, we've got some really beautiful homes and buildings in the city of Southfield. And, um, it's just real interesting how years ago, um, people, um, came up with these different designs and, um, the builders, um, it was very informative. So, thank you, Mayor. Also, I believe today is the kickoff of the Miracle League in the city of Southfield. For anyone who hasn't attended the Miracle League, it's a wonderful opportunity to, um, just view, um, a baseball game for those with disabilities. They're always looking for help and for people to volunteer their time to either be on the coach, to, um, cheer the young adults or children on. And it's, um, just heartwarming to watch the Miracle League. I know they play on Monday nights during our council meetings and, um, I might come back and challenge council to all support one of their games and volunteer. It would be, um, a wonderful experience. Also today, we had the opportunity to, um, see the completion of our DPW building off of Franklin Road. Um, they did a fantastic job in renovating the site. And I'd like to congratulate, um, the team that put everything together and bringing that building into, um, the future. It was really old and rough before. Um, and in closing, um, on behalf of myself and also my colleagues, I'd like to wish Mr. Zorn a happy birthday. I know this is the last place you wanted to spend on your birthday, but, and many more happy and healthy years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hicks?
Yes, thank you, sir. Uh, last Friday, I had the honor and privilege of attending the graduation of Southfield A&amp;T as well as University High School Academy. Um, this, many of the students are going on to their next chapters of their lives. Some of them taking money to further their education. Uh, over eleven million dollars was raised as of that date to help students further their, their, their education. At the graduation, and I'm not sure if many of the, um, people in our community know, Southfield and the city of Southfield Fire Department have a collaboration. They have a fire academy. And there were several students who passed the state test, um, coming out of high school to become firemen. So, you know, there's multiple pathways within the Southfield Public Schools, not just for those who are going on to universities and colleges, but for those who are in skilled trade as well as, uh, public service. So congratulations to all of those students on their next chapters. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoag?
Wow, we've got a lot going on, so I gotta get mine in too. I want to echo Councilwoman Haines' comments about our Memorial Day and just elaborate a little further. I don't think I seen where any other city did what we did. We were on the news. We had a lot of congressional people here celebrating with us. And, um, I just have to give kudos as well to the Southfield Veterans Commission and the mayor for putting that on. We celebrated the Monford Point Marines, which were the first African-Americans to serve in the Marine Corps. Where we honor, um, Marine Butler Martin. And just to expand on it further, because of his race, he wasn't allowed to grow further, uh, in rank. in rank. But to come here and to celebrate him, it was so great to see that. But I'll tell you, we've had Rabbi Starr here, Pastor Chapman, again, a lot of elected officials, Senator Jeremy Moss, Rashida Tlaib, our Congresswoman, she was here. And we all stayed to the end. It was just that magnificent. But I'll tell you, for me, the Star Point was that storyteller. If you, I don't know if it was taped, but it was amazing to see, and that was Master Sergeant Ramon Rogers. And again, I can't stress much, that was just Southfield doing it. I didn't see Detroit do anything, any other city. And it was just amazing. So kudos to everybody that was involved. That was one thing. Then I think from there, we went to the Filipino-American Festival that they had here in the city. And it was a great opportunity to just celebrate diversity here in the city. We were so welcome, and it was a pleasure to just be amongst the Filipino community. They were so welcoming to us and appreciated to celebrate with them. So I wanted to make sure I acknowledged them as well. Then we had one of our great partners here in the city of Southfield, Lawrence Tech, their scholarship gala. Lawrence Tech is doing amazing things and to just see what they're doing, reaching out to underprivileged students in other countries, to bring them back here to make a difference. And Southfield is on the mark outside of the U.S. in things. It was just magnificent. And really it was so humbling to see people who want to come here and see the Southfield to learn. And, you know, we were just looking at opportunities to even help those students who come in here so we can help welcome them not only to our country, but to little old Southfield. So that was great. Then I think we ended it with a fantastic fashion show put on by our mayor, although I'm disappointed he didn't take the runway. But we tried to get him to. He was dressed to the T, but he wouldn't do it. And that was where we celebrated vintage clothing where our Southfield students modeled for us, and they did a wonderful jobs in support of the Friends of the Southfield Public Arts. And I think it's no secret that I'm being brought out more about the arts. The mayor's pushing me and Councilwoman Haynes to appreciate it more. I don't have that artistic eye, but it was wonderful to see the students engaged and, oh, they were so serious. And, I mean, we were in the Sky Club. It was a beautiful setting. And I was happy to invite five others to come and support, and they were there. And, you know, and I'm going to end on this. Some of my sorority sisters were there, and they said, "We happened to see this on the news," I think, and they had nothing to do, and they came up. Because I was like thinking, "I didn't tell them to come," but they were there. But it's amazing that people are finding things to do here in the city. And that says a lot about all of us, the administration, the things that we're doing, great things here in Southfield, and just congratulations to us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, there's just not much left. It was mentioned about the Memorial Day program that we had, that one thing that we did, we honored Marine Butler Martin, who is 101 years old. For those who are interested, it is currently playing on the city's YouTube channel. It is an excellent program, excellent story. So I do encourage everyone to take a look at that and watch the entire program. There's just a number of things that I wanted to mention. The city's currently collecting nominations for community pride awards. So if you know a home or a business, house of worship, school that has very nice landscaping, they take care of their yard, you feel free to nominate them. And there, you know, there is a deadline. I'm not exactly sure when, but you can start nominating your friends, neighbors, or just even if you drive by a business and you happen to think that their landscaping deserves a nod. And forms are available on the city's website. That program is also run through Community Relations, which also helped put on the Memorial Day program. So kudos to them. Community Relations is also currently running the Southfield Photo Prize, which next week they will have online voting available for everyone to take a look at the finalists of all the photos that were submitted by those in Southfield. The number of entries, over 100 entries were submitted, and they've narrowed it down. The Total Living Commission has narrowed it down, and there will be online voting available starting next week. I don't want to take everything, like I said, everything else was said. Again, a happy 29th birthday to Mr. Zorn. And then as well, happy Father's Day to all of those fathers out there. And have a good evening. Mr. Mayor?
Well, you left me nothing to say. I'm very grateful to the 166, 170 people that came to our vintage fashion show and support of Southfield Public Art, and the roughly 70 people who attended the Mid-Century Modern Architecture Tour yesterday. The tour is about acquainting people with our diverse collection of wonderful buildings. A variety of architecture leads to the vibrancy of a city. We want to protect these. And we want people to appreciate them. So we do this tour annually to show people and bring people to our city. We are, I wasn't giving out prizes for the people who came the farthest, but we actually had a couple from Toronto, Canada, visit. And also from the far side of Ann Arbor. So it was very gratifying, and it was a sellout, both events, and we will do them again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you. My first comments pertain to Public Works. I believe most of you are aware that Patrick Ryan will be leaving us at the end of the month. And in the interim, I've appointed Abdul Sidquil, our Assistant City Engineer as the Acting Public Works Director. And Abdul is working and shadowing with Pat now. You know, I'll remind council that we have two long-term superintendents in both water and streets and highway. And we have quite a bit of bench strength there, and I appreciate council support as we go through this transition. We'll be working with HR to make the appropriate decisions at the appropriate time. The other Public Works item, there's been a lot of headline. Last week, it broke that Priority Waste has acquired the residential accounts from GFL, who services about 700,000 residential accounts. We have a lot more questions than we have answers right now at this time. There is a meeting of all of the member communities out in Clinton Township this Thursday, so we hope to get a few more answers. We have placed the item on the study session for our next council meeting on the 17th, and we hope to have a few more questions answered. I think it's interesting that it's, when we went from the transition from Rizzo to GFL, when GFL bought Rizzo, they bought the entire company. In this case, only the residential clients have been sold. Priority Waste was the second bidder in our contract. We do know that they'll be honoring the terms that we recently bid, which also includes a large transition from Southfield as we go to the large carts, containers. So expect more information on that and find out. Want to thank council for their support. Today, we had an open house for the Public Works Roundhouse. We just completed a $1.2 million renovation. In my 15 years here, the building has never looked better. I'm excited about some of the projects we have going on. The cold storage building is going up, which will further help clean up the yard and organize. And also the generator, that we have the funding and council's approved that. That building is so critical during storm events when we don't have power. To know that we'll be able to fully operate the building is a major enhancement in our operations. So we appreciate council's continued support on that. Wanted to also just comment, we had a number of people at the Mackinac Policy Conference. Southfield hosted a reception that was very well received, and our partner in that was Lawrence Tech. Meetings that we've had, and a lot happens, we had very long meetings with the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, our friends at Oakland County. And, you know, this, these are those paths you put in place when you're trying to secure funding. I'm really excited about what's happening here, and the foundation Southfield has laid in the entrepreneur and the innovation arena. We're clearly being recognized as a leader. If you look at some of the things happening in Detroit, with, whether it's the book building or the Ross Center or different things, we've been ahead of that curve. Had conversations with different foundations who are very familiar, and I'll use, for example, the Song Foundation, who we're reading a lot about in the papers today, very familiar with what we're doing at our centropolis and what's happening there. So the work that this council has done with our Smart Zone and supporting those activities is being recognized. And we were one of the few programs funded by the New Economy Initiative outside of the city of Detroit. So this is about working to secure those dollars and bring them back into Southfield. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Good evening, council. I have nothing for the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, as the weather is heating up, so is this year's election season. We are getting very busy in the clerk's office, making sure that those who are requesting absentee ballots get them. We should look at the ballots that are on our permanent ballot list, as well as processing of our absentee ballots to the voters by June the 27th is our goal date. So I just wanted to say that to everyone. And then also, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, inquiries about your voter status, call the city clerk's office at 248-796-5150. To comment on Juneteenth, I have something very profound to say, and I appreciate the mayor and the council's dedication to making this almost a month-long event. I didn't hear a lot of firsthand stories about my heritage and my ancestors, but one thing that I did hear was that, you know, I'm a pretty tall person, pretty, as they say, big boned, big boned person. But my relative, who was a slave back before my great-grandfather, I was told that he was such a large man that he was used like a mule to carry a cart, to pull a cart, not a human being, but an animal. And so as we look at commemorations like this and celebrations like this, I feel very, very fortunate to be living in these times and know and realize that my ancestors made a great contribution to the development of this country through our shared pain. So happy June 15th and happy abolishment of slavery in this country. I love this country, and I'm just so glad that we can commemorate what we've been through, all of us, in one way or another. We're all newcomers to this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Planner, do you have anything?
No, I'm just hopeful and looking forward to our joint meeting with the Planning Commission. Hopefully that we can schedule and approve tonight for 4:00 PM on July 15th.
Okay.
You want a motion?
Sure, why not?
Mr. President, I move that we approve that joint meeting with the Southfield Planning Commission for July 15th, 2024, 4:00 PM at the Parks and Rec Building, Room 222.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to schedule a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on July 15th, 2024. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then that week is also, we're hosting the Lawrence Tech Summer Camp to introduce students to landscape architecture and urban design. There still is time for students to register through the end of the month. We do offer scholarships. Last I checked, we had seven students registered, two grandchildren of city employees and a planning commissioner. So I'm looking forward to this year's summer camp. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Building Official, do you have anything for this evening?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Seeing nothing else to come before the council, this meeting is adjourned.